The council had advertised an executive session tonight, but we didn't open it. What do you need for it, is that right? Mr. Ronlow, we don't plan to open it later tonight.
We do not.
We know executive session tonight. You know it was advertised. So we will call our 7:30 meeting to order and ask you to rise the invitation and pledge permission to attend.
Let's pray. Lord, we can thank for this community that we live in, its leadership and citizens and the opportunity that it provides. We ask that you, thus, make decisions this evening. Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united in law, indivisible, infinite and just.
We first have a joint public hearing scheduled between the planning, zoning commission and the councils. We will open that public hearing. We only have one tonight. And the way this works is that it is a public hearing. We allow the applicant to make a open statement. And then we'll give any guests that would like to speak for or against the application an opportunity to do that. If you want to speak and you're not the applicant, you need to register with Ms. Billy Brown, but she's going to call them in the order that you do register. The planning, zoning commission is a planning arm of the community that will study the recommend or study the request and then will make a recommendation to the council. We will open the public hearing on conditional use applications, CU 13-19A. Ms. Stonebaugh from our staff, do you have, I understand we have some correspondence to report.
Yes, sir. There's an email at each of your stations from the applicant received later today that's asking the table request until November 19th. That's in order to work out some of the issues that's come up here at the last minute. The applicant would like to have some time to address those. And she is here to see if you can be having questions. And of course, I'll be having to answer.
Mr. Chair.
You've seen the letter and heard the staff's comments in regard to this, but Ron, are you sure the 19th's right into the 15th?
Oh, did I say the wrong one? The third Tuesday in November? I apologize for giving you the wrong one. It is November 19th.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm telling you. So a motion to anybody who wants to make a motion to approve the table to November 19th?
Move to table, November 19th.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed?
The zoning commission has tabled the public hearing that was opened just a few minutes ago till November 19th. Motion is in order from the council.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, all opposed. This means that this is the only notice that you received that the public hearing will be intended to November 19th. At that time, we would expect the applicant to make their presentation and to give anyone that's here tonight an opportunity or here that night to speak. If we'd like to, did we have anyone registered to speak?
Yes, sir, me too.
Okay. But then this is your notice that you need to be back here at the same hour on November 19th. And do we have any letters of petition?
We have two letters copied before we pack.
All righty. Then that will conclude the joint public hearings between the planning, zoning commission and the council.
You guys got off easy tonight.
Thank y'all coming down. We appreciate your service.
You sit down, you do whatever you want. You press all the buttons. Yes.
Okay, then we'll continue with council meeting during hearing citizens' requests.
Yes, sir. Carla Gump, 4113 Meadow Drive.
Mayor, council, as you know, I go through the agenda beforehand to look over stuff. I have one question. It relates to consent, agenda item number seven. I was under the impression after attending many meetings that the library is going to go through some renovations too, specifically a walkway. So my question to the council would be, why would we want to put carpeting in the library right now when there's going to be renovations between the civic, the activity center and the library? I'm a guy that builds stuff for a while and it's always messy and dirty. So my question is, why would we want to put carpeting in the library at this point and not do it after we get done with renovations? Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Were there any others?
Come here.
All right, then we have a presentation to make to Mrs. Dowling, Director of Development, involving recognizing Alzheimer's Association and their fundraising. Come right on up here. Good to see you tonight.
Good to see you too.
All righty. Whereas over five million Americans have Alzheimer's disease and we have a population that is aging, the disease impacts an additional 15 to 16 billion Americans to our family caregivers providing estimated 17.5 billion hours of unpaid care valued at more than 216, is that 216 or 2.16?
216.
Billion dollars. The Alzheimer's Association was founded over 30 years ago by group of dedicated family members to ensure care and support to individuals with Alzheimer's disease and related disorders, including their caregivers and families. The Alzheimer's Association's vision is a world without Alzheimer's. The Alzheimer's Association walk and Alzheimer's home. The association's signature fundraising event will be held at Medimere Park, Grapevine, Texas, on October the 12th of this year to raise awareness and funds for Alzheimer's care, support, and research. The event is built annually in more than 600 communities nationwide and eight locations in the service area of the North Central Texas chapter. But we're very proud to have you hold this event in our community, join with all of our citizens in recognizing the Alzheimer's Association, our central Texas chapter, and support your efforts and hope that your research and your resources will someday help bring an end to this terrible disease.
I appreciate you, Chair, so much.
It's your pleasure.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Darlene. Thank you to the Grapevine community. I join the gentleman who opened us in prayer, thanking the Lord for this community. Five years ago, we had our first walk. Y'all helped us raise over $20,000. And this year, our sixth year, our goal is $83,000. And Grapevine has always exceeded that goal. What we do with this money is twofold. We fund research because unlike a lot of diseases, we have no survivors. It's a fatal disease and when a person contracts it, it is going to end in death. We are trying our best to make sure that future generations do not have to go through this. And we don't want to see children and grandchildren watching their parents and grandparents suffer. Also, we want to care for the caregiver. Every disease, when you're a caregiver, has a stress factor for that caregiver. Alzheimer's is particularly insidious because it's a 24/7, seven days a week, 12 months a year, round-the-clock care. So we try to help with programs and services to make sure that the caregiver is healthy. So our research to end the disease and caring for the caregiver to make sure that their life is as rich as it can be and that they're as healthy as they can be to then care for their loved one. We have the logo, the slogan of Walk to End Alzheimer's, and we've had that now for about five years. This year, we have a new T-shirt cover. Before I show you the cover, I want to tell you why it's important to me. Everyone in this room probably has a story about a friend or a relative, a loved one who has the disease. They know something about it. But I had a personal experience with my mother-in-law. In 2004, she was diagnosed with Alzheimer's and we lost her in 2006. To this day, my husband cannot reconcile the fact that he was not known by his mother when he walked into her room. He has not come to grips with that. So after she passed away, we hadn't, our children were grown and we thought, okay, we want to make sure that our children don't see us and we don't have to have Alzheimer's on the next generation. Well, we changed our focus slightly about 15 months ago when my son and his wife presented us with a little grandson. My goal is that that baby does not grow up to see his grandparents with Alzheimer's disease. I'm 65. My symptoms could be just starting and they may not present until I'm 85 years old. How old will my grandson be? 20. Will he know me and will I know him? That's my goal. So our T-shirts this year have a little saying, "I Walk to End Alzheimer's." And that's what we're all doing. And it has a little white space where we will put a personalization and I will put "For Graylin." And that's my grandson. I want every person in this room to have the same opportunity with your grandchildren, your children, your nieces and your nephews. We're set right now with our generation. We can affect the next generation. With your help, everything you've done and everything you do to help us with this walk, we appreciate. And future generations will look back and say, Grapevine helped us find a cure for this and Grapevine helped all those persons who are dealing with Alzheimer's disease. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, could I just say something real quick? I asked Lynn to come tonight because I agreed to be the honorary chair for this event this year. As she knows well, I lost my mother in May to Alzheimer's and I wouldn't have made it without the Alzheimer's Association. And it is my hope that people will show up and that it will be a really positive event and that someday, someday in our lives, we won't have Alzheimer's anymore. And it's so great that Grapevine hosts this every year. So I just wanted to let everybody know and to thank the Parks and Recreation staff for having it at Medimere Park every day. And thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for those comments and thank you, Ms. Dowling, for your appearance tonight. Best luck and best wishes to you and your organization. Next, we have a presentation on the proposed Roundabout entrance for the community activities center and library and convention center. Dan, how was it?
Stan and Kevin.
Yeah, you look funny, Stan.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Just to give you a little bit before Stan talks about the actual Roundabout, just to give you a little bit of history, back in July of 2012, when we contracted with Prose Consulting to bring forward the concept and the master plan of the community activities center. The original intent for that building at the time was to have the entrance off Nash Street. Through design and discovery, up until February, excuse me, January 28th of 2013, when Steve Blackmore with VRS presented the final plan of the proposed community activities center which he chose, showed the reconfiguration of the building, and also showed the spine road between the community activities, excuse me, the library and the convention center. And that was through some discovery process, working with staff, working with Convention District Bureau, Janice Robertson, Public Works and Fire, to come up with a different circulation route, which kind of came up to that design is what the VRS team and their engineers came up with and then ultimately recommended. A Roundabout would be very nice there instead of a four-way stop. So just to give you a little bit of history before Stan talks about the financial impact of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. And the question was raised by the council in workshop about the quality of life funding budget for the, for what's named or currently referred to as the Roundabout entrance into the CAC Library and Convention Center complex. In the spring of last year, the construction manager at RISC for the CAC put together a cost estimate for all three of the elements that you see on the screen, A, B, and C, totaling $767,000 and change. And that, I believe, was the number that's been carried in the quality of life funding. We currently have an engineering firm onboard that is preparing the design for this work. And they have updated the cost estimates and hunted down some value. So we're down from, excuse me, from 767 roughly to 688,000. And that includes all three components of the slide that you saw a moment ago. So the question about the Roundabout being costing roughly $250,000 is still correct. The issue is just that there were some other components for the total project, including the main entrance into the site from the Roundabout, as well as parking and landscaping on the west side of the library. So this is the number that we're operating with at this point and I'll be happy to try and answer any questions if I have.
Would you just go back to the other slide real quick? Thank you. I'm just trying to understand. So off municipal way, the access to the community activities center is through A and B?
A and B, correct.
And it goes around the back of the library to get to the community activities center? Is that right?
Yes. Although that's not really the back of the library.
No, I understand. It's the front of the library and it'll be the front of the community. Sorry, I misspoke. It'll be the front of both?
Yes.
Okay. And so C, oh, I see. C goes back out, so you can like do a drop-off or something because C goes back out, that road?
No, C, C will not, C will not connect to the Roundabout. It currently is a dead end where people pull in, park back out, and then come back out on the north side and that's the way it will remain. There will be some limitation on the parking to just one side of the, of the main north-south aisle and parking lot that, that will provide for added room for landscaping.
So anybody that goes down C has to back all the way out? What am I missing?
They can turn around and...
Okay, they turn around and then go back. It's not one way. They can turn around and go back.
Correct. C is currently there.
Right.
Parking right now primarily, isn't that correct? Yes.
So what's the cost for C? What are, what are we doing in that C area?
C is...
Right. But I guess is that taking out some of the concrete and putting the landscaping in?
Yes.
And what is the need, what is the need for that?
And making repairs, sorry.
Can we go back again? What is the need for making adjustments to areas there? What's driving us to need to do that?
Basically, it's for landscaping, a wider green, green space, green belt along municipal way from the, from the Roundabout up to the new CAC. There's obviously significant amount of landscaping adjustments in and around the CAC complex and this would just be sort of an extension of that.
So the roadway is going to stay the way it is now? It'll be just like it is right now? The road itself? I'm sorry, Stan, I'm just having a hard time understanding.
Which roadway are you referring to?
C. We're both, we're, yeah, municipal.
No, what will happen is right now is roughly a 25-foot wide driving aisle.
Okay.
With head-in parking on both sides.
Okay.
And the head-in parking on the west side will be removed to add to the landscaping area that runs along municipal way.
Are we changing anything on municipal way, are we?
No.
So we're taking out parking spaces for the library to add landscaping?
Correct.
So this is really...
I think C is primarily employee...
Library parking anyway.
Yeah.
So this is really almost a separate issue from the Roundabout itself? We can do...
It is. It doesn't have to be done. But the Roundabout and item B does have to be done.
Right. Stan, maybe, was there other issue to that Janice in regards to that C parking area?
It's all staff.
I mean, other than the increased landscaping, was there a library issue?
No.
So it's, it's kind of an independent segment of this whole project which could or could not be implemented.
It is independent, but there are some repairs that need to be made because if you remember, that drive used to continue, continue on to the south and we had the circle drop-off there and that was never reconfigured from then. So there's several handicap areas that do need some work regardless if this happens or doesn't.
Well, and I think we should all keep in mind that even though this is sort of back of the house relative to parking, it's a primary entrance to this facility. And having this landscaping is a, is going to give some screening, I would think, for that employee parking. And I mean, we're looking at a 28, $29 million project and I think $100,000 to make that look really nice is something we shouldn't just haphazardly eliminate myself.
I didn't understand. Are we out of parking at the library? We don't have enough parking there now? Was that the answer?
No, sir. The, that is employee parking. Our employee entrance is on the west side where our old entrance was to the original building.
Okay, and you're losing that.
No, we're not losing it.
Could it enhance?
So I don't understand the need for that much more parking for the library and no more for the convention center and no landscaping for the convention center. I really think these projects ought to have been separated and looked at individually, but it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to me. It looks like just a chance to spend some quality of life money to be. We've got a nice parking lot at the library. We don't have a very nice parking lot at the convention center. And my concern about the Roundabout, you're going to speed up traffic, but you're going to just deaden them to the red light just a few feet away. So how are you going to move that fast of traffic into the Main Street and get them out of there? You're going to back them up all the way to the Roundabout real quick. So that's what I don't like about the Roundabout. There's no place to go. There's no, you're wanting to put them all at the red light, all right, but unless somebody's going to be there controlling it when you have an event, it's not going anywhere.
You know, I think, I mean, I think the mayor makes some good points. I think, I mean, are we asking to approve this tonight? Is that what we're asking to do or...
This was just an update.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we need to look in the context of the bigger picture. I mean, I think we need to see Main Street. We need to see the distances. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what I mean. I'm fine with it. But I understand that, I understand what the mayor's saying and I do think looking at it in the context of Main Street. It's hard to understand it looking at this picture. It's hard to understand it looking at this picture.
We certainly come back.
That's what I think we should do. I think we should do it.
Stand, come back just a second, Stan. Help me recap what the purpose of the, the concept of the Roundabout. What was the benefit to the CAC expansion?
Well, the benefit is, is you've got a limited, you've got limited access to the CAC now. You've got some sort of entrance between the library and the convention center. You're going to have to, you're going to have to access from Nash Street alone and the library is somewhat hampered in their access because you don't have the access around the north side of the library as you currently have. Now, the Roundabout was just an idea that would provide a different approach to just a four-way stop. And we could put a four-way stop in there and it would be less costly than the, than the Roundabout, without question. The Roundabout, from our perspective, you would have an opportunity for a fairly significant public art display in the center of the Roundabout if the council chose to pursue that. I mean, it's, it's up to y'all 100 percent.
Stan, I wondered if, if it might make, you know, the, the number you have here, I mean, it's still a, a good-sized number, 688 grand or whatever. Could we look at, what kind of dollars are we looking at, even if we just go with the basic four-way stop? You got to still build that B section, you know, and what, so basically what the incremental cost is to us to go with a plan like this?
The incremental cost is about, if you eliminated the Roundabout, you would have to add about $50,000 to the cost of area B because there is a segment there that's missing.
Okay.
And then the question is then the area C and the library parking, whether or not the council wants to pursue that, so.
So you would save about $200,000.
You would save around $225,000 probably.
Well, I would think too, and certainly I understand the desire for the Roundabout. I agree with the mayor with the convention center and the event that's going to back out the traffic. For the CAC, I, I think over time, speculation on my part, but I think a lot of those users are going to enter the CAC off of Nash Street rather than go down through Main to, yes, municipal way and the Roundabout across. So, you know, I...
I wouldn't argue that at all.
Outside of the event that the convention center, that conceives we could very well back out traffic, but beyond that, I, I think, you know, it's a pretty nice idea and a concept. But again, I think most of the people at CAC will come out of Nash.
From an artistic standpoint, an entrance standpoint, it's an opportunity, but when you look at the traffic flow, it, it just isn't going to work, in my opinion. I mean, I just don't understand that. We ought to be trying to get people from Nash Street out to Dallas Road, it looks to me like, rather than trying to put them all into one spot on the Main Street that they can't get through. It isn't a problem down there now. It all flows just fine and you're not going to add that much more to it, I don't think. It's a bigger facility, but you know, it, unless there's a convention going on, there won't be as many people there coming out at one time as there are when we have a convention now. It flows pretty good because they, they go different ways. They come out of there, they go to the left, some go to the right to Nash, some go to Main. The Roundabout's going to draw them all to come right out to that red light.
We can certainly decide it for just a four-way, four-way stop. That's not, that's not...
Well, I'm just wondering whether we don't wait and just see if we, you know, if we have a problem and then so address it. Why don't we just leave it like it is and try to disperse it into Nash Street and, and down to those reliever streets to the south?
Stan, is there any reason why if we postponed or took this out of the quality of life fund and went to the four-way stop like we're suggesting, that at some later day we revisited this, that we could come back with another option like the Roundabout? I mean, is there something to ask to happen right now?
My only concern would be you're, you're limiting direct access or good access, if you will, to the library. Right now, they can drive from municipal way, they can drive down the north side of the library and into the library parking lot on the east side. Now, if this, without something on the south side of the library, you're going to have all of the entry features coming from Nash Street or through the convention center to the south. And that may, that may work.
I don't think anybody's suggesting not putting a road there on the south.
Okay. That would absolutely be my concern as well. But you have to realize that you're taking the north access driveway in the library. But you have to realize that you're taking the north access driveway from the library.
So back there, you just take the roundabout out?
Got you.
Yeah, yeah, but let me understand. I'm really confused because roundabouts, if you're familiar with driving them, make the traffic flow better, not worse. So I'm not sure we've determined that a roundabout is worse traffic-wise. I mean, help me understand that. Because I know like through South Lake where they have the roundabouts, that traffic runs smoother than a four-way stop like it is at Kemble and Dove where it's a mess. So I just think...
The issue here is we don't really have the traffic backups like some of those intersections in South Lake where you get cars stacked up, 10, 12 car lengths.
You're absolutely right. It's just we're doubling the size of the Community Activities Center.
If they back up enough, they're going to block the, the roundabout. So you would have to work out something on that line to move them. When they move fast through the roundabout, move them fast through the light on to the, to make it work.
I guess my concern personally is that it's kind of like it's, it's an item that is, that's outside of our budget that we set originally for the CAC expansion. And I think at the time that we said that we were looking at numbers that were a lot smaller in, from off the cuff or off the hip, numbers from the construction manager. It's, $688,000, now it just is a lot of money at this time. That's my, that's my problem.
So are we saying all that's outside the budget? Is all that outside the budget?
It is, absolutely. It's a, it's a brand-new entrance.
Okay.
And we're already, we're still looking at 200, just to make the drive...
275.
275.
Well, maybe we should look at that.
We have to do that.
Yeah, you're looking, you're looking at about 265, 270.
We have to, we have to...
We've got to have that traffic.
We've got to have the road.
Well, let's go with the, the basic version of a four-way intersection for now, you know, get the road in there, and if the traffic warrants it at some point where we need to increase the velocity of flow through that intersection, we can convert it.
I'd really, I'd also like for us to, if we can go back to the previous drawing, the previous slide. I'd like for, I have enough confidence in our good landscaper, that's indeed in our Parks Department, that we can come up with a landscaping plan near Area C where Janice wouldn't lose that parking and where it could also be landscaped and be very attractive. And I'd like to see us visit that as well. I don't think we need to spend that kind of money in Area C.
And there are areas to be done there we can do that, repair as much as...
They just need to pull the landscape and the parking out. Have a different issue, and they need to include, whatever we do, we ought to do for the convention center and make it look alike and make it where either one can park with either facility if we have overflow. I'm not saying we don't need to expand the parking lot or don't need to expand the landscaping. I'm just saying it's a separate issue, and we all look at both, all of it together. It doesn't make sense to do one, not do the other, for the time being.
Then I think what we're hearing, though, is, is that, is that no roundabout, four-way stop, and then entry road B, those two things are what you're comfortable with now, and then all the rest of it, we'll just come back and visit with you at a later workshop.
The thing I agree with is first the traffic in the more in one location.
Correct.
And then you get more bang for your buck.
Correct.
And you move traffic faster if you do that.
And I will tell you, we, we need the decision on the four-way stop and roadway B. So if that's your direction, we sure want it because as I understand, Stan, we need to get that rolling in advance of the construction of the, of the project itself and have that open so that we'll have it open this next spring as a construction route into the job.
Well, that would be the goal, just start construction this spring. But it shouldn't take that long.
Yes, sir.
That, that portion of that, would we be doing in-house?
No, we probably would not. We, we were actually thinking about another approach in front of reevaluate that, and I'll get back to you and let you know. But, but our original intent on this, the roundabout as well, was not to do that work in-house.
Yeah, I think if it worked, it'd be one thing, but it just, it doesn't look to be like it works. It's a mistake. We can use that money for art or something to make it a very attractive entrance anyway, I think.
Oh, we can make both entrances attractive, either Municipal Way and also Nash Street, so...
Understood.
That's the ideal, seven. All right.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent of Gen. 4 through 13, are not scheduled for any council debate. Any guests present who would request that any item be removed for further discussion at this time? Do we have any requests?
Your honor, item seven, please.
Item what?
Item seven, please.
All right, seven's off. Any others?
Item 12, please.
12?
Yes, sir.
12's off. Any others? All right. Then item four through six, eight through 11, and 13, 100 percent, motion is in order.
I make a motion for approval from Senator 4 through 6, 8 through 11, and 13.
Second?
If we get a second call in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item seven, consider a resolution authorizing the term key purchase of carpet and insulation services for the library from retail commercial foreign service with an interlocking participation agreement. All right. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, Mayor and City Council. This carpet is to go into the children's area, which is 12-years-old, and it will not be impacted by the expansion of the Community Activities Center next door. There will be no interior connections between the two buildings. They're totally separated. Any walkways would be on the exterior, and so there would not be any traffic or road or anything tracked in. And this is the area where we have the very graphic carpet leading into the children's storytime area, and it has been ravelling for several years now. And so it would really make this area look much nicer and have the presentation that Greatvine deserves to have it replaced.
I think this carpet's actually two years past the time we should have replaced it. And I'd make a motion that we approve item seven.
Second?
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item 12, consider an ordinance of men in the gray land code of ordinance is Chapter 25 Utility and Services, Article 2, water insurer relative to amending residential and commercial water wastewater rates.
Yes, sir. I've struggled with this a good bit in light of the long number of years that we had rates where they were. During that period of time, we amassed a considerable fund balance in utility fund. And that was allocated towards various projects here in recent years. I've had a number of calls, and maybe you all have too, from citizens concerned about what they perceive as a, as a very large increase at this time. Eighteen percent is a big increase. And there seems to be a lack of understanding in the community about what the funds would be used for. Are we going to need to expand projects? And I explained it as best I could. I'm just really struggling with this, and at this time, the reason I ask it to be pulled off is that I'm going to need to vote against this. Sorry. I'll make a motion for approval.
Second? We have a motion for approval. Now, second, any other discussion?
Well, before we vote, make the same comment. I think we've done well. I certainly recognize the need to support our infrastructure and have our rates to, to meet that. But at the same time, I think simply raising the rates without coming up with a water plan to conserve and deal with our water shortages is, is something that we should look at simultaneously. Based upon that, I'm going to also concur with her and vote against it, just not because of rate, because I think we need a water thing to go with this.
You know, under the law, the water and the sewer rates are supposed to break even. We're supposed to generate enough revenue to pay the revenue bond.
That's right.
Where, where we made the mistake is when we didn't raise rates, when they didn't break even for several years. And then when you do it all in one move, then it makes the percentage high. The rate is still...
Very low.
Very low. You can't look at the percentage, you have to look at the rate. The bottom line is, we're not going to have any water to sell if it doesn't run. We're not going to do any irrigation.
That's why I said we've got to have a...
And so, you know, it's just the water system in the state of Texas is upside down. When it rains, we let the water out of the lakes, and when it's dry, we, we have to conserve, so it doesn't make any sense. But it's beyond our control in many ways to really do anything about that. And so I think we have an obligation. We budgeted it.
Right.
I think we have an obligation as a matter of law to do it, and we were very critical that we haven't done this before, so it would be like other utilities that would have been increased periodically. The people are the beneficiaries of the delay. They've gone six years when they should have been paying for it, and they didn't. So they should be happy.
Mayor, you're right. I think that the problem's been we've delayed taking care of this. That's what we've been longing for.
Well, nothing...
So it's not a question of politics, it's a question of responsibility. So I don't, whether I like it or not, it's the reality and it's where we are, so I'm going to support it.
I think the reason we did not increase the rates earlier is because we had this huge fund, fund balance with the existing rates. That's what is my understanding.
Well, we're in a downturn economy too. I think that was not a consideration.
Do it this year, you have to do it next year.
Well, you have a wrong assumption.
It's a possibility for the way we've done it. So anyway, have a motion. Second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. That completes the agenda tonight. We thank you for being with us. And we had a very short meeting because of the continuation of the public hearing. We invite you to...
See you next council meeting.
With us again, a motion for adjournment is in order.
Do we adjourn?
All in favor? All opposed, motion carries.